I will now call the February 19th, 2019 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and I will lead you into the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you seen it? I want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might watch YouTube later. Tonight's City Council meeting. Next we have the consent on gender unless their items need to be approved, except for most approved.
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Levinson.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next we have the second reading of Bill 4627 annexing two properties located at 1450 Southeast US 40 Highway.
Second reading of Bill number 4627 and ordinance annexing .010 plus or minus and 0.66 acres plus or minus located on the south side of US 40 Highway and 1,500 feet east of Southeast Adams Dairy Parkway into the corporate boundaries of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Levinson.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4793.
Okay, now that the property has been annexed, now we have a public hearing on the rezoning.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record: staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on January 12, 2019, applications with attachments of 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letter to send to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, and 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, and Bill number 4634. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay. Nathan, on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Mayor Ross, City Council. Before you today is a public hearing at the request of the applicant and owner Alan Swerengen and his wife Barb Swerengen. They're requesting to rezone 0.10 acre property from County Agriculture, since it has just been annexed in the city, to the applicable zoning district LI ADPO, which is Light Industrial Adams Dairy Parkway overlay for this property addressed near the 1450 Southeast US 40 Highway. Property is located approximately 500 feet south of 40 Highway and about 1,500 feet east of Southeast Adams Dairy Parkway. Currently, the property is undeveloped and located as such. So, S.B. Ventures LLC is looking at actually developing and combining this 10th acre tract with their 6 acre property that they have already final-platted. And this map sort of shows, the 10th of an acre is the south portion that goes east to west. It's a strip of land. And it's just south of the 6 acre tract, which they have annexed, rezoned, and platted previously as a subdivision named Casey Bobcat. And they do want to include this parcel as part of that tract and further as part of their development for Casey Bobcat. So, staff does recommend the rezoning to LI ADPO, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions? Nathan? Seeing none, thank you. Is the applicant present? Okay, we'll go to the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak in support of? Support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. We would like to introduce Bill 4634.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill number 4634, an ordinance rezoning property from AG County Agriculture to LI ADP-O by the Industrial Adams Dairy Parkway overlay.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Levinson.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given, oops, I'm sorry, carried unanimously. Second reading of Bill number 4634, an ordinance rezoning property from AG County Agricultural to LI ADPO, Light Industrial Adams Dairy Parkway overlay.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Levinson.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Apologize for the out of order here.
That's all right.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4794.
Okay, next we have a public hearing on a Unified Development Code amendments.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record: staff report number ended with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on January 26, 2019, application with attachments, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, and 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, and Bill number 4635 approving the UDC text amendments. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, I guess, Mike, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. These are, this is a public hearing for various amendments to the Unified Development Code. Staff periodically brings these amendments forward after the implementation of the code and the actual practicality and use of the code in reviewing development projects. It becomes necessary to amend certain things from time to time, as staff realizes and applicants realize that there may be some changes in trends or some things have changed over time that make it more business-friendly to change the code to allow things that are a little bit more flexible, as well as to update the code to current business practices. The original, 2015 Unified Development Code was adopted in 2015. It's been amended six times so far, the last one being May of last year in 2018, so this would be the seventh. I'll go through these rather quickly and also be happy to answer any questions that you have at the end. These UDC amendments are kind of divided into three sections. The first are changes to our downtown development code and the historic overlay district, some cleanup of some code amendment or some code language that we found over the course of the past year, and then a new section to allow some flexibility in the parking design standards. So individually, they are, the first one is Section 40802O under the HO, Historic Overlay District. The specific amendments, remove some redundancies that are in the code created by, that were created when we adopted the downtown zoning district, and also modifying the bed and breakfast and restaurant provisions in the code, specifically removing standards for accessory apartments and duplex dwelling units. That was in the old historic code, and with the adoption of the downtown development code, those now have become redundant because we do allow for duplexes in the downtown development code, and we now allow for accessory dwelling units, therefore making the accessory apartment not necessary, that provision. Also, to provide some regulations for bed and breakfast, which would allow the operator of the bed and breakfast to be a full-time resident of the dwelling or the detached accessory dwelling unit that's on the same lot. So, that was brought up through the Historic Preservation Commission and the Development Advisory Commission, and that was one of their recommendations. The next section is under 411030, which is the use groups and description of uses in the historic overlay. We have a number of land uses that don't have or did not have definitions at this, up until this proposed amendment, and that made it pretty difficult when we were working with people who want to do certain land uses in the downtown and historic areas, that we didn't have a definition, be able to kind of quantify what they were trying to do, and then put it into the appropriate definition and use category to determine whether it's allowed or not. So, without that direction, staff was kind of looking at other cities and going off of, you know, our professional judgment. We thought, let's put these definitions in there so that it's clear for the public and clear for staff in reviewing those. So, by example, we now have definitions for art galleries, antique shops, bed and breakfast, a museum, and we tweaked the restaurant definition. Restaurant is defined in our code, and restaurants were allowed by right in the historic overlay, and we've tweaked that to be a restaurant specialty, to further define that, so that it kind of lessens the scale of a restaurant in certain areas within the historic overlay to make it more of a smaller-scale operation, such as a tea room or specialty food type of a restaurant, rather than a full-scale restaurant that could be in one of the residential, or one of the zones in the historic overlay downtown that allowed residential uses, to kind of mitigate the impacts of those two. The next section of the code were under the 407 or 040, which are the site and landscape design. This has been before you before, but not in a code amendment format. Previously, under the UDC, anytime there was a buffer to be installed on a commercial or residential project, the code required that buffer to be put into a landscape easement that was reflected on the subdivision plat for the property, which proved to be, over time, a little bit cumbersome as properties redeveloped, and also did not reflect the flexibility that's in our UDC in terms of different types of buffers and the choice between buffer size and the amount of corresponding landscaping you have to put in each of the buffer sizes. So, staff is confident that the UDC provisions for buffering are more than adequate to ensure that we have the buffers and the landscaping, and that you can't do anything in those buffers besides the landscaping that's required. And so, actually having a legal easement for that landscaping, staff felt, is redundant. An example of this was over on the Aldi project, when they wanted to move their parking lot a little bit, and also, most recently, was the Colonial Nursery project. They had that structure, I think, kind of a pergola thing that's up against Wyatt Road, and when they went through that and got that approved, it was to be built at a 25-foot setback with a 25-foot landscape buffer, and then we put a 25-foot landscape easement in that area. That was their buffer one option. Buffer two option could have been a 15-foot landscape buffer with additional plant materials. Both would have been allowed under code, because they chose the first one, and because we put the easement on it when they changed their mind and wanted to modify that request, we couldn't just do that through planning commission or through a site plan. We actually had to go back and vacate that landscape easement. And so, it was a little bit cumbersome on the applicant, and we feel that we're protected through our UDC provisions elsewhere. So, that's an example of why that's before you. The next section revolves around the residential building type standards for the detached houses, standard large lot and neighborhood lot. Currently, the frontage widths on those, I'll go with the large lot first, is 101 feet to 150 feet for the lot width. And for a neighborhood lot, it is 66 feet to 100. These numbers did not match up with the previous zoning districts of the SF-7 and the SF-12. The SF-12 was 100 feet to 150 feet, and the SF-7 was 65 feet. And so, in essence, when we adopted the code in 2015, we created a lot of legal nonconforming uses, because we had a lot of 65-foot lots or 100-foot lots. And so, they, these lots kind of fell into this gray area. And so, staff is recommending that we pull those two numbers back and make those more aligned with what has been built throughout the city to prevent further nonconforming situations, but also to kind of clean up a little bit of a nuance in the code, is that if somebody were to come in today and try to build a lot with a 100.5-foot lot frontage, it wouldn't be allowed, because you're capped at 100 feet for the neighborhood lot, and you have to be 101 feet for the large lot. And so, we're just moving those numbers back a little bit. We don't believe that there'll be a significant impact on subdivision design throughout the city. Similarly, we've noticed with the duplex standard lots and the duplex neighborhood lots, the code allows, under the definition, a duplex to be either two units on one lot or two units to be on their individual lots if they're subdivided along the party wall that separates the two dwelling units. So, you basically run the property line down the middle of the unit, and then you can sell the unit with the land underneath it, rather than just having two units on one lot, which is, unless you go through a condominium plat, that's the only way that those units can be sold. So, we believe that that's led to a lot of rental duplexes throughout the city, and so we've proposed modifying the code to formally allow them to be subdivided along that party wall, which we believe will help promote homeownership of duplex lots, which is, we think, a benefit for the city. So, specifically, we are talking about reducing, cutting in half, in essence, the frontage width minimums, the lot area minimums, and allowing a zero-foot setback when that party wall subdivision is used to separate the two units. And so, that is being proposed for the duplex standard lot, as well as the duplex neighborhood lot. The fifth section is under the Board of Adjustment to remove references to a use variance. Previously, the code did allow for use variances, which would be, for example, somebody asking to do a residential use in a commercial zoning district. Zoning dictates that you can't do that, and so, somebody under this provision of the code could say, I would like to get a variance from that provision. But, use variances aren't allowed under other sections of the code. We merged use variances and non-use variances many years ago, and so this, we feel, was kind of leftover language, and so we're just proposing to clean that up at this time. The final section is under the parking requirements. The UDC specifies the minimum amount of parking to be required for individual land uses. Under Schedule A, which are pretty standard land uses that don't have a lot of differentiation between the different land uses, Schedule B, which can allow for a little bit more of a mix of uses, Schedule A might be a restaurant with a drive-through. Schedule B might, would be like an office that has different types of users within that office building. Schedule C is kind of a process for uses that have a wide variety of parking requirements, because they're very difficult to determine the exact number of parking spaces. And what that process says is, an applicant can hire a traffic engineer, propose a traffic study, and based upon operations of that use, based upon the parking demands that they've seen in other uses of that throughout other parts of the city or other examples, they determine, and through a traffic analysis based on parking or traffic counts and trips, that this is the amount of parking that they feel is necessary for their use. That is then either reviewed by the Community Development Director, if it's for something that doesn't rise to the level of planning commission or City Council, or through planning commission that can get approved, if it's for that type of a site plan design review. What we're proposing is that any of the Schedule A or Schedule B uses may use the Schedule C process if they can provide a study and subsequent backup data and evidence that warrants a reduction in parking or a allowance for an increase in parking. So, what this is in essence doing is saying, we have our normal parking standards, but given certain operational standards of certain uses, there's the ability for either the director of community development or the planning commission to approve a different parking count based upon how that individual use operates at that site. So, it doesn't say we have to do it. It doesn't say that we're bound by whatever those traffic or parking study numbers say. It just says that there's a little bit of flexibility in determining those numbers. And we feel like that is something that will be beneficial to our business owners in the city, and by tailoring parking to that individual use at that site, but will also help right-size parking requirements in the city in certain locations, so that we don't end up overparked or underparked. So, those are the summaries of the issues that were presented to the various boards and commissions. These were presented to the Development Advisory Commission on February 1st of this year. They recommended approval with the recommendation that detached structures be allowed to be used by guests as part of a bed and breakfast, which we wrote into the code amendments before you. That was recommended unanimously. These amendments were also brought forth to the Historic Preservation Commission on February 6th. They recommended approval of the amendments to the historic overlay with recommendations for changes to allow for a little bit larger signage for certain uses from four square feet up to six square feet, which is a two-by-two sign, modifying that to a two-by-three sign, so just a nominal increase, and also to permit additional restaurant uses. The way we had written it is you couldn't carry out food from your specialty restaurants. So, they wanted to incorporate that, that if you walked into one of these specialty restaurants, you could take your food to go. So, those were their recommendations, which they approved unanimously. Planning Commission, we took these on February 11th, and they recommended approval of all of the amendments by a vote of nine to one. I know that's a lot I just threw at you in terms of the intricacies of the code. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, Mike, from the council?
I just have a statement I'd like to make. Our parking situation, our required parking, has bothered me for many, many years. I hate it when I go to a building and we've required all these parking spaces, and it's a minimal-use building, and we have all this huge empty lot. So, I'm glad to see this being addressed, and I hope that this will eliminate some of that, because that, to me, is a problem.
Yes, we definitely see the need for probably a broader look at all of our parking regulations, similar to the SIGN code, but that's kind of a long study and a long-term project. We feel that this measure to allow this parking study to apply to all the uses is kind of a good Band-Aid, to be able to allow us some more flexibility in determining parking standards, because we do agree with that, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
We'll go to the public. Anyone who would like to speak in support of? Support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce Bill 4635?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill number 4635, an ordinance amending various sections of the city of Blue Springs Unified Development Code. Section 40802O, H-O, Historic Overlay District. Section 41103O, Use Groups and Descriptions of Uses. Section 40704O, Site and Landscaping Design. Section 40502O, Residential Building Type Standards. Section 40203O, Board of Adjustment, and Section 40701O, Parking and Loading, Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
And I will let you know I'm going back to where the roll call should have started. I apologize for earlier. We've got Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Levinson.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Second reading of Bill number 4635, an ordinance amending various sections of the city of Blue Springs Unified Development Code. Section 40802O, H-O, Historic Overlay District. Section 41103O, Use Groups and Descriptions of Uses. Section 40704O, Site and Landscaping Design. Section 40502O, Residential Building Type Standards. Section 40203O, Board of Adjustment, and Section 40701O, Parking and Loading, Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Levinson.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4795.
Next we have the introduction reading of Bill 4636.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill number 4636, an ordinance approving final plat for Bill's addition lot three.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Levinson.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Second reading of Bill number 4636, an ordinance approving final plat for Bill's addition lot three.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Levinson.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4796.
The presentation from the Human Relations Commission has been rescheduled to March 4th. So, we're going to go to the presentation by the Volunteers and Police Services, which better known as VIPS. I see a number of people that are in the audience with blue shirts on, and I see a couple of council members with, I don't know if that's lime green t-shirts on.
It's blinding, for sure.
Yes.
We brought sunglasses for you, Mayor.
So, we're going to introduce Sergeant Joe Fenero, and then he has a backup back there, is Officer Alex Smith, and we, the ball is in your court.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Ross, City Administrator Eric Johnson, council members, thank you for inviting us this evening. We currently have 50 active volunteers and police services that help the city in numerous ways, such as helping with court, front desk, day and the police department, logging false alarms, park checks, private property parking checks, extra patrol requests, shop with the Blue Springs cop, traffic control, F5Ks, parades, and the Fall Fun Fest, and a lot more activities. This group of dedicated volunteers has worked very hard throughout the year on tasks that would otherwise fall to police officers and other city workers. This allows Roll Patrol to spend more time handling calls for service and being available to assist community needs. These tasks are often administrative, tedious, and time-consuming, but these volunteers perform these duties week in and week out, without pay, complaint, or need for recognition. In 2018, the Blue Springs Volunteers, VIPS, volunteered for 5,149.5 hours, on an average of over 100 hours per person. Concerning what it would have cost the city of Blue Springs to pay employees, not counting overtime, to complete these tasks in absence of the VIPS on behalf of the Volunteers and Police Services, we would like to present the city of Blue Springs with a check for $127,141.
I'll let you do the handshake.
You know, once we moved out of City Hall, I have a number of these checks, hopefully it's in storage somewhere where nobody's taking it and cashing it. But I think, once I get this one, I might have enough for winter home in Florida.
Yes, if we could, please.
Bookended?
Just make sure.
Too bright yellow?
Yeah, make sure you have pretty space in here. All right. Everybody, all right. Say cheese.
Big old computer. You have a picture even there.
This Thursday at 11:30, Adams Point Conference Center is my 11th State of the City address. So, if you haven't already planned to be there, we certainly encourage you to come, because thanks to Miranda and David and Eric, and I think Christine participated somewhat as well, we have an exciting State of the City address that's going to be this Thursday at 11:30, Adams Point Conference Center. If you don't get a chance to come, it will be on YouTube and all the social networks afterwards, so you'll have an opportunity to see that. That brings us to Thostapunda, and I quote, "In recognizing the humanity of our fellow beings, we pay ourselves the highest tribute," end quote. And that comes from Supreme Court Justice Thurgood Marshall. I don't have anything else, no visitors' appearance forms, and I
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Levinson.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
We adjourn.